The May 28th, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:05 PM. We're going to ask Pastor Jefferson, John L. Jefferson, to please do the invocation today, sir. We're going to ask Pat Donaldson if she could do the Pledge of Allegiance today. It's good to see you back. We haven't seen you for a bit, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and fellow citizens of the City of Hawthorne. Bow with me. Almighty and Triune God, we gather to give you thanks and give you praise for your mighty works. You are loving and good and kind and generous to each and every one of us. We thank you for creating us and sustaining us day by day. We thank you because you have made us perfect in your own image. And you have allowed us to gather and to commune in this great city called Hawthorne. We thank you for allowing us to welcome strangers, the disenfranchised and the disconnected. We thank you for allowing us to be here to support those in the needs of the needing and to defend the innocent from evil doers. Lord, we thank you for all of our members of our civil government, for those that bear the power of legislation that guide and rule our city, to the officers who protect us, for the ministers that pray for us, and for the civil workers that make sure that our streets are clean and hospitable. All of this combined together allow us to live and to reside in this city and to sleep in the night with peace and joy that we may arise to your work in the morning. We acknowledge that all that we do, from the civil servant to the newest member of our community, we have been called to be faithful in our duties, to be faithful in our work, to support this civil government and to support this city, that we may grow and thrive. We are thankful for every business, every church, every family and every individual that make up the great city of Hawthorne, California. We thank you for allowing us to be prosperous, no matter how small or how great it is. We are thankful to you. In Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Put your hands over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The roll call, please.
Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson. Councilmember Reyes English. Mayor Proton Manning. And Mayor Vargas.
Here. Councilmember Angie Reyes English is, uh, absence is excused. Okay? So we have, uh, let's see, let's see, let's see. Let me just double check. We have about four items for presentations, so we're going to ask that we keep the present, presenters limited to the 10-minute limit that we have, just so we can move the meeting along. Um, so just keep that in mind. Speakers who will be addressing the City Council will have about three minutes to address us. So, uh, let's start off with Shannon McMurray and Chantel Dixon. If you, ladies can come up so that we could start the fireworks drawing. Okay? This shouldn't take too long. We have about, uh... How many spots do we have?
Seven total.
Okay. We have seven spots. Seven spots total?
Yes.
Okay, and who are the ones that are like, uh, get the...
So hello, good morning.
You got it?
Sorry, getting me every morning.
Go ahead, take it away.
So the participants of the firework drawing is Hawthorne American Legion Post 314, Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 2075, Wounded Heroes of America, Centinela Bible Church, Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce, Hawthorne, uh, LAX Rotary Club and Kiwanis Club of Hawthorne Foundation. So without further ado, Shannon will go ahead and turn the raffle.
We're just going to screen just to pick the order that they're going to choose their locations.
Um, a quick clarification, because we've had this come up before. Um, are there... Do we have three of the groups that are automatically going to get to choose first?
Yes, we have three grandfathered locations, which are the Wounded Warriors of America, Hawthorne American Legion 314 and Veterans of Foreign Wars.
And they already have their numbering in place. Okay, go ahead.
Spot number four will go to Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. Spot number five, Hawthorne LAX Rotary Club. Spot number six, Centinela Bi- Bible Church. Spot number seven, Kiwanis Club of Hawthorne Foundation. We'll go ahead with the outside. We'll take everybody's locations. Chantel, tell them.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I just want to mention, thank you, ladies, for doing that. We're supposed to have eight spots, right? So that means one of the nonprofit organizations could have applied, because we're supposed to have like eight spots for firework. So the, the, the three that is grandfathered in and then five application, but we receive only four application, correct? Yeah, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. Guidelines for commu... Oh, well, no, we do have the presentations. So that was the first presentation. I didn't, yeah, well, I thought we were done. Our next presentation will be given by Mr. Andrew Jared of Colantonno, Highsmith and Watley. Mr. Jared, please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, that's going to be delayed to the next council meeting, for June 11th meeting.
I think item number three is going to be delayed as well.
Let me, let me make sure that there is nobody here from the Richstone Family Center.
Please raise your hand.
Is there anyone from the Richstone Family Center? Okay, so we'll postpone until the next time. Thank you.
Diana Medel will give our last presentation. Diana? Did I pronounce your last name correctly, or... Boys and Girls Club presentation. She, she is the Director of Strategic Partnerships.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. My name is Diana. I serve as the Director of Strategic Partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club of Carson. And I'm also a club kid, so for full circle moment for me being here with y'all today. And so today, we're going to talk a little bit about the Boys and Girls Clubs, what we do and what we hope our collaboration will look like with the City of Hawthorne and the youth. And so I would like to introduce our CEO, Kim Richards, who will lead our presentation today.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kim Richards and I'm the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club and I have been there for 19 years. Thank you, City Council, for giving us the opportunity to come and speak with you a bit about the Boys and Girls Club and what we do for youth and communities. Today, we wanted to share a little bit about our organization, and I'm not sure if some of you are familiar, but the Boys and Girls Clubs in general has been around for over 160 years. It all started back in Hartford, Connecticut, where three sisters saw that there was a problem with young men, young boys, on the streets and hanging out in bars, where there was a lot of fighting going on from the folks, you know, that were coming out of the, the coal mines and they were trying to get the scraps of coal so that they could, uh, take it to their family for, for income. We've come a long way since then. Currently, our organization has been around for over 30 years and our mission is to offer young people a safe environment where they can have fun and be themselves with dedicated adult mentors who respect and listen to them and provide outcome-based programs that empower youth to become lifelong learners. And our vision is that 100% of the youth that come through our programs will graduate from high school with a plan for their future, which includes giving back to their local community. As I mentioned, we have national roots and we also have local roots as well. We currently serve schools with Los Angeles Unified School District and we receive funding from 21st Century, which is No Child Left Behind Federal Funding, in addition to Proposition 49 funding, which is, was passed into legislature when, um... Thank you. When Arnold Schwarzenegger was the governor. And most recently, the state passed over $4 billion into the budget for the last few years for expanded learning so that every child TK through, through sixth grade has an opportunity for after-school and out-of-school time care. In addition, we have over 20 years of CDBG funding in the City of Carson and those funds help support the organization's clubhouse, which is located on 215th and Main in Carson. I also wanted to just share a little bit about our programs. We offer programs in three core areas: academic success, char- character and leadership, and also healthy lifestyles, health and wellness. And we can be found on 16 school campuses, a clubhouse, and then also we're in communication or we're conversating with the Gardena community as well about doing a special program this summer. You can see that we have a variety of programs underneath each of the pillars that I mentioned. One of the things that we are known for is case management and that starts in fourth grade and goes all the way through seniors in high school. And I'm proud to say that 100% of the kids, the seniors that go through our program who apply for college are accepted and attend college. We also offer certification programs for students to get their food handler certification, CPR, first aid, in, in addition to driver's education and driver's safety. We are also providing about 4,500 students each day with structured recess programming where they learn to be leaders on the playground and they coach their own peers in structured activities. And so they're starting in, in, at ages nine and 10, learning how to be leaders in their community. As I mentioned, we serve quite a few students. Last year, it was 9,300 students throughout the South LA area, including unincorporated Compton, Watts, South LA, Carson and Gardena. One of our most popu- popular programs is STEM: Science, Technology, Engineering and Mathematics. Our STEM programs offer hands-on activities, project-based robotics and lessons in biology, chemistry, coding, podcasting, engineering and physics. In fact, every year, our middle school students have a STEM day and this year, we hosted it at the Columbia Space, Memorial Space Center and they compete for prizes like Switch and iPads, laptop computers. And we're very excited that this year, the winner was a young girl, a, a high school student, who created a model of creative way to bring water to communities in need by using various underground storage methods. Specifically, we know that STEM is one of the leading fields in our economy and STEM field is paving the way for innovation. STEM education gives young people the confidence to, you know, to try things and learn from their mistakes. We like to think of life, if you think about it, is, um, it's trial and error. And if we don't get it right the first time, we have an opportunity to pivot and try something different and test out different theories. And we're very proud to say that 80% of the kids that participate in our programs say that they are interested in STEM and they're excited to learn more STEM activities. As you know, many of those fields are, starting salaries are $100,000. And if kids don't learn early on that they have the possibility to become professionals in the STEM field, then they don't know what they're aspiring for. So we want to introduce them in fun, engaging ways. I also wanted to just share, as STEM is important in our future, there are still some challenges that STEM education faces and the National Foundation highlights a few. The first one is access. Not all youth have the access to do hands-on STEM-related activities. Too often, learners' zip codes defer, you know, determine their, or their income levels determine their, you know, access to quality STEM programs and, and their future in learning those opportunities. And we want to make sure that all kids know that they, they have the opportunity and they deserve the right to learn those things that will help prepare them for their futures. I also want to talk about an opportunity that we would like to engage with, with you, in your community. We do have, you know, a great relationship with Cal State Dominguez Hills as well. And just one other bit of statistics is that their economic forecast report this last year said that the South Bay communities have many competitive strengths, including high-tech industries, a strong startup invest- and investment culture. However, we must prepare our young people to take on jobs as they become available and there aren't enough people prepared for those jobs currently. Professional, scientific and technical service makes up 7.3% of the South Bay's workforce. And we believe that it's all of our responsibility to provide access to those, those programs that teach kids and give them exposure to careers that can pique their interest for their future. So what does that mean for Hawthorne? We would like to, you know, bring access to high-quality STEM programs to as many youth as possible and that includes in this, in the City of Haith- Hawthorne. And our proposal is to bring a robotics pilot program to the Hawthorne youth this summer. We would like to serve 34th and 5th grade students with an immersive, amazing robotics program camp to showcase what the power of partnership can do. And the Boys and Girls Club would be investing in this program and we would invest in paying this, our, our staff in addition to the robotics kits that the kids would get to take home at the end of the summer. The goal of the program is to obviously expose kids to the robotics field and coding and ensure that they can approach it with confidence and try things that may seem hard, but once they try it out, it, it can increase their awareness and their confidence in the STEM field. So in order for the pilot to be successful, it's critical that we have the support of you council members and, and businesses and communities because it truly takes a village to make this happen. The Boys and Girls Club is committed to making an initial investment. We're offering this program July 22nd through August 2nd. It is a two-week, three-hour-a-day program and that may seem like a long time for 4th and 5th graders to be participating in STEM activities, but they have a great time and time goes by very fast with culmination activities at the end. And so they are literally programming these robots to do tasks and comport and compete in team competition. So this, this poss- this is possible because of our dedicated, committed and talented Board of Directors whose mission is to serve as many students as we possibly can in the South LA area. And I, I want you to know that we are very dedicated to measuring our success as well. And so the success of this pilot program will be measured with pre and post-test surveys by students who participate. And then one of our staff members, you know, they tend to say, "Youth vote, vote with their feet." And so through this, we'll, we'll know of their interest as they keep coming back for additional, additional program support. So our goal is to learn more about the Hawthorne community as we do this. We will work with staff, should the City Council be supportive of our coming in and providing these services, to work out all the details. But that's really what I wanted to come and talk to you about is just to let you know that we'd like to be as much support as we can.
Thank you so much for being here. I think this is a great idea. Uh, I'm a science guy, so I mean, it particularly appeals to me and since Hawthorne is a point of synergy where we have El Segundo to the west, we have our own SpaceX, Tesla and all this high-tech stuff going on here in this area, this is the perfect point to be able to have something like this. We have the Science Academies, Hawthorne Math and Science Academy. We have the Lennox Math and Science Academy, the, uh, the academies, the, uh, the magnet programs that are at the, since, this is just in a perfect addition. So I think it'd be good if we could connect you to the Community Services Department. Who's here is from the communities... Okay, okay, we have Kiwana, so if you could connect with her, make sure you guys talk and see if we can get something going very soon.
Would love that. Would love to say that we're building a pipeline to the jobs that are available in your community.
Look, it's hard. It's hard to make it out there. Home prices are going up. It's just hard to make a living and to be able to stay. So we want to make sure that our, our students and our youth are better, uh, as best prepared to be able to make it through these difficult times that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
To the chair.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm well aware of the great work you do. You forgot to mention that you guys feed these kids when they come in there. Also, um, it sounds like all of your locations in, are in spot six. Do you have any in spot eight? No, that's like the, um, Long Beach. Do you have?
Carson.
No.
The only one that would be in that area is where we're serving Rancho Dominguez Prep and that might be on the border because that's technically Long Beach.
Okay. So the ones that, that was in your presentation are the ones that, that you service, which is a total of what, six?
Um, no, there's 16 locations that we provide services at.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and depending, and this summer, we'll be at, um, seven, eight locations, providing summer programs.
Wow. I'm so glad to hear that you want to partner with us. I think this is a great idea and I echo what our mayor said in terms of this being a city that's focused on technology and, you know, those jobs that's paying $100,000 is in this area of tech. So I'm so glad you came. Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you so much for the work that your organization does and we look forward, at least I look forward to continuing our relationship and seeing our kids learn. Can I be one of the students learning about that?
Well, I was also going to see if the mayor might want to volunteer and come in and be a guest instructor. We, it seems we have a lot of candidates on there.
With the algebra. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, to the chair, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Richards, for coming tonight. You should have brought us some cookies.
Oh, you know what? I, that's Girl Scouts. The Girl Scouts serve the cookies, sorry.
Oh, sorry about that. So maybe you have to invent something.
I'll be prepared next time, though.
All right. But let me say, yes, thank you. Your presentation actually was beautiful because, uh, you know, the STEM is very important to, to all the childrens and, and you touch on access and diversity and inclusion. So that is very good because that's what we see because, believe it or not, the President Parham from the Cal State Dominguez gave us a presentation two days ago at the South Bay COAC meeting. She was talking about that diversity, that inclusion, that 91% of the students that he has, most of them are female and also 61% are of color, like kind of African-American and Latino. So definitely, we need to make sure that these kids are prepared. And I have to tell you that your program is, it sounds like, uh, you have to go to all these school districts that we have in Hawthorne because we have five school districts in Hawthorne, right? And one of them, actually, the president is sitting on the audience. Mr. Luciano Aguilah, can you stand up, please? He is the president of the school board currently for the Hawthorne School District. And I was on the school board, so, and we have a STEM academy at the Bart Carson Middle School that could be, maybe can partner with Hawthorne School District, with the Weisburn School District. School District, and then with LAUSD to the, to the, to the northeast. And to the southeast is the Longdale that we have Boja Park there. So we got all these districts and schools that are promoting STEM, because like Mr. Mayor and Ms. Katrina Mene said, that Hawthorne, you know, we have the SpaceX, but we also have the Air Force Base that employ about sixty-one hundred individuals and all of those aerospace jobs. And it's about one-point-six-billion-dollar industry just at the Air Force Base. And of course, we got SpaceX that have, have more than three thousand employees, like doing all the stuff for the rockets and then the Tesla. So it is a fit to come to us. And you, and I understand that you also said you, you already in Carson, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Carson is, is SPOT eight, because Hawthorne is SPOT eight, too.
Okay.
So, so, so you're already in SPOT eight, because we are part of SPOT eight, go all the way from Inglewood all the way down to Long Beach, it's considered SPOT eight. So, so you're already in, in the, in the neighborhood. So definitely, we want to partner with you, but I'll tell you to make your connection with the, especially Hawthorne School District, because the bigger district, they have about eight elementary schools and so, and three middle schools, and one dependent charter's high school that is Hawthorne Math and Science Academy. So you will be well-received, because after-schools STEM is things that they are promoting very heavily. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Please connect with Kiwanis, please. All right, thank you. Oral, oral communications, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954 dot three, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Thank you.
And just to note, I also want to read into the record, I've received a letter from Mrs. Melody Wadman, and I've distributed that to all the council members.
I think you should rec, read it on the record, please. Can you please read it on the record?
The letter?
Yeah, because if it's a communication, it needs to be done on her behalf. Go ahead.
Okay, at your request, I'll do so. This is regarding the Volunteer Appreciation Day. You should all be so ashamed, except for Mo and Dana, you cannot even spare thirty minutes of your time.
You missed Alex Montero.
Um, you cannot even spare thirty minutes of your time to honor the people who give you their time, money, and put their heart into making this a better city. In the Golden Day of Hawthorne, back to Miller, Kohler, Guidi, I, I don't know all of these words here.
Yeah, Lambert, dance word, yeah.
Yeah, um, you bet they did, because they had class. This council does not have. Yes, I have been around this long to know what I am talking about. The Wadmans have been in Hawthorne since the thirties, which is older than most of you. I think it was a disgrace for you not to come. You did not survive without volun, you cannot survive without volunteers in the city, and you know it. I feel you owe a lot of people an apology for ignoring them. I am so disgusted with your behavior. And that's from Melody Wadman.
Okay, thank you. Chova Salazar? Three minutes, please.
Good evening, my name is Chova Salazar. I've been here at Charmaine's twice, and this is the third time. Uh, this is in regards to citation CE 12803, issued by Michael Purcell, which is supposed to be some kind of field investigator. So this issue has been, I've been trying to resolve it. I've talked to you a couple of times. I've been to the front desk, asking for the balance. They say there was no balance. So these are my issues. The city of Hawthorne never provided the appeal process. Every city has an appeal process and the right to, for the residents to be heard. For Mr. Greg McLean, the overlapping branches are not within the city's jurisdiction and thus, and that the other property could trim the branches, and this is cited. One item being cited is caused by the city of, by the city's park in the back of thirty-seven forty-three, West One Thirty-Second Street, and this is cited. I feel harassed, as much as I hate to tell you. I feel harassed, I feel discriminated by Michael Purcell, and this is putting a lot of stress, because we're going through a lot of issues with some people. This is a basically citation, and it's, and it was sent to collections, and this will hurt my credit. Again, I went to Hilda, to the front desk twice, and she said there was a zero balance, and she wanted me to tell her the balance and pay, which I thought it wasn't reasonable. So I did try to settle this issue. I do not want any issues with the city of Hawthorne. I do not want to be known by you for not being in cooperation with the city. And I thank you so much for your time, and I have five pages to be given, which were given to Mr., actually, some information was given to Mr. Norris, City Manager, and he never answered, he never contacted me.
We'll reconnect you through the City Manager's office, through our police chief, who is here in his presence, representing him, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Pat Donaldson?
Thank you for the time.
Absolutely. And if you could just get her contact information, do whatever we need to do.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Patricia Donaldson, President, CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I want to thank everyone, the mayor, Alex, Angie, and David, the chief, Vaughn, for coming to the hospital, even though, and the Balboas, I didn't know. I was paralyzed from the neck down for three months, and I was in the hospital four months. So it was the fourth month that I was able to know what was going on. So I thank you for coming, for all the bouquets of flowers. There were so many flowers in my room that my husband had to bring them home. So I want to thank everyone for praying for me and for being there for me. Dana, also, she came. There's so many, but thank you so much for being there for me. I, I'm back, I'm back at the office, and I'm on a cane, but I can walk without the cane at home and at the office. I just don't like to walk without it when I'm out. Okay, so that, that's number one. Number two is we're having our golf tournament, which is going to be September thirtieth at Rio Hondo. I left brochures out there. And I hope that all of you that are able to golf, or know people that can golf, can sponsor our event. It's our tenth annual golf tournament. And then on June twentieth is our mixer at the chamber, and we're going to be having bingo, so someone will win a hundred dollars, someone will win fifty dollars, someone will win twenty-five dollars. And I also want to thank, my last but not least, the chief, Gary, and the Hawthorne Police Department. They sent me the most beautiful bouquet, and I've been in Hawthorne twenty-four years, and Chief Gary is the best chief we have ever had. So I, I love him and I love the police department, but you know that I'm partial to the men in blue. So thank you. Well, my husband was, you know, he's a retired police detective.
You know what's good.
Anyways, thank you so much. Take care.
Let's give her a round of applause for her recovery.
Good to be here.
I mean, the reality was, it was a gnarly accident, and, you know, you, you know, you went through recuperation and you made it, and you look great. So, good to see you back. Ellis Ariza, MECO, AB 626 Act.
Hello, I'm Ellis, and I just wanted to get some information on, on this food act. I have a little physical limitation on my body, and I had to go to like the yard twice this week for a little incision and stuff, and I'm looking to get a surgery next week. And I was just trying to do some research on that, on, on what are my options for, what are the options for people that want to sell foods, food from home, like cook meals and stuff? And through my research, I got a little bit confused, because there's the act, but I guess every county has to pass the ordinance. And, yeah, I just wanted some information on that.
Well, we're gonna do, we're gonna connect you through the City Manager's office, through our police chief, to connect you with our licensing group, and they'll tell you what you can do, and then they'll, if they need the support from our City Attorney's Office, they can help out.
I called this morning, and they just told me to go online, and I went earlier before they closed, and they said the same thing, too.
I'm not giving you that response. I'm, 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 I'm gonna have them talk to you, one-on-one. I think it's better that way, right? Does, is that okay?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, we need to get some answers for you. Okay, sir? And thank you for being on, wanting to be an entrepreneur and doing everything you can, even in your delicate situation. Dexter O'Connell, Safe Place for Youth.
Hello, Mayor, Members of Council, Dexter O'Connell with Safe Place for Youth, a provider of homeless services to youth and young, young adults experiencing homelessness, housing insecurity, and precarious housing situations. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today about FYI vouchers. What is that? Well, an FYI voucher is a special type of housing voucher. It's for former foster youth and current foster youth in what's called non-minor dependent care. Ages eighteen to twenty-four are eligible for this. Any housing authority in the United States can request up to fifty of these per year. And when LACTA, the county housing authority, got a, an allocation of these vouchers, LA County DCFS opened it up, and they determined that there were about ten youth in Hawthorne who applied for these vouchers and qualified under the LACTA allocation of vouchers. So that means that there are young people in Hawthorne who would qualify for these vouchers. What do they provide? Why are people interested in that? Well, they provide three years of housing, two additional years if the young person takes a federal life skills class. They also provide the stability of a beloved community that helps to substitute for the lack of family structure that foster youth do have. So what do they come with? Well, LA County DCFS will do all the legwork to identify a full list of eligible individuals with a meaningful connection to your city. It's not trying to get anyone and everyone, but folks with a real connection to Hawthorne. And cities like Culver City and Redondo Beach and Pasadena have said yes to these vouchers because of that, because it's establishing a program for folks with meaningful connection. And then once the vouchers are, are allocated, LASSA and partners like SPY and Harbor Interfaith Services, which is the youth lead provider in SPOT eight, and our direct partner, will provide housing navigation and case management. And LASSA actually just announced last week that individuals with these vouchers will be prioritized for housing navigation slots. So that means everyone who gets one of these vouchers will get a dedicated case manager whose only job is to help them secure their apartment with the voucher. Now, what does Hawthorne need to do for this? Well, because you have an independent housing authority, that means you can request up to fifty of these per year. Will we ask you to request fifty? No. Culver City is starting with between three and eight. Redondo Beach said they would do up to five. Other cities have said they'd do more, but the city of Pomona, which has been operating this program since twenty nineteen, started with, or, sorry, twenty-twenty, started with five and has now increased it to ten after several successful years. So the staff needs to fill out a two-page federal application with just the individual list of names that DCFS will provide to them already, assign the matched vouchers, and we'll do all the rest. So we'd love to meet and discuss this program with your staff. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you.
Yes, thank you. This sounds like a great idea. I mean, who would have ever known that there was a special voucher program for the youth? So I didn't know that. Maybe a lot of people did, maybe some people do, but...
Lots, lots of housing authorities don't know that this program exists.
So I'm gonna connect you with our City Housing Department head, so you guys, you guys can line everything up, okay?
Thank you very much.
She's right there, so she could talk to you in the back. Thank you. Luciano Aguilar, Presidential K-9.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Today, I'm in front of you as the owner of a business here in the city, Presidential K-9 on Prairie and Hundred and Twenty-Second approximately. And I just wanted to kind of brief you guys on a little bit of what we have going on at our facility. Aside from it being, you know, your, your dog training, your daycare, your grooming, we have created a program where, through the partnership with Gold Coast K-9, who is a police canine training center, they've donated dogs that didn't quite make the cut because they were too friendly. They've donated them to us to create service dogs for veterans, but through that, we brought in high school students. And so we currently have five high school students that are learning how to train service dogs for veterans. And, and I'm here just to kind of give you guys kind of a brief thing of what's going on in your city, but at the same time, I would love, at some point, once these kids are great, if we could maybe bring them in here, because I've already talked to the Vet, Veterans Administrations, and they want to recognize these kids for taking their time and, and, and doing what they're doing. We've also taken them on a field trip down to Naval Bay San Diego on Thirty-Second Street, and they were mentored for a, for a day by the, the young military dog handlers that are serving our country today. So, so it's been a great opportunity to watch these kids just, just flourish, just grow. They went from being quiet little kids that had no idea what was gonna happen to now having a, a deep voice and, and, you know, being, just feeling empowered. And so, so I would love to, at some point one day, bring them in when, once they feel more comfortable, and, and maybe you guys could recognize them, give them a pat on the back, because it is about, you know, the future. And so teaching these kids to provide and, and serve their community, I think we should all try to do that. And, and so we're, my family has, has taken the lead with our, with our company there. The doors are open to you whenever you want to come and visit as well. That's it.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else who would wish to address the City Council? This is the opportunity to come and address the City Council. Just remember, you guys have three minutes, so if, I know...
Mayor, City Council, good evening. Good evening, Mo Awadala, President of the Kiwanis Club in Hawthorne. So just a friendly reminder, this Tuesday, June fourth, from eleven-thirty to one-thirty, we're gonna have our Hawthorne Police and Fire Recognition Luncheon. And this is gonna be hosted by the Kiwanis Club in Hawthorne. So let's come out and celebrate our police department and our LA County Fire Department. And also, I want to thank everyone that came out to the Hawthorne President's Council K-9 Dinner. I think as of today, we raised ten thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We're still waiting for more checks to come in the mail. So I want to thank everyone and the community members. And also, please keep the people of Gaza and Rafah in your prayers. As we all know, I am Palestinian, and it's just sad what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next group has multiple people. If you guys would like to join them in solidarity with your group, you, you're free to come up, I mean, one speaker at a time.
Yes, sir.
Okay? But you're a group, so it'd be nice to see everybody who's representing your group up here with you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Council Members, residents of Hawthorne. My name is Kyle Patterson, and I'm a representative for the Western State's Regional Council of Carpenters. And today, I would, I would like to just let you know that we are interested in building these little libraries in the city of Hawthorne. It provides the community members with easy access to books, fostering a love for reading, and strengthening ties amongst residents. As a gesture to demonstrate our support for community wealth and empowerment, the Western State's carpenters are committed to supplying all materials and labor necessary for the project. We believe that initiatives like this not only enhances the community and the quality of the community, of our neighbors, but also promotes a sense of unity and, and a, a sense of unity amongst the community members. We are excited about the opportunity to contribute to the well-being of Hawthorne residents and would be honored to work with you all to make this project a reality. Please let us know if you're interested in this proposal, and if it aligns with the community's interests, and if we have your support to move forward with this project. We look forward to the possibility of collaborating with the city of Hawthorne to bring this vision to life. And just a little quick fact, as of the most recent data, the national literacy rates of children in the United States showing a concerning trend. According to the National Assessment of Educational Progress, the NAEP, in twenty nineteen report, approximately thirty-four percent of fourth-grade students read at or below the proficient level. This means that sixty-six percent of fourth graders are reading below the proficient level, with the, with about twenty-seven of them performing at below basic level. So again, promoting reading is... So again, promoting reading is a collective effort that can significantly impact individual lives and enhance the community by proposing something like this. So we've also done this type of style project in other cities, I believe Alhambra, and we have another one going to the city of Los Angeles. So again, thank you again for your support.
Thank you, sir.
Can I have a question to the chair?
It has to be super brief. It has to be super brief.
Do you have in mind a location of where you're going to build those little libraries?
It just has to be direct.
So wherever you all think would be a good idea, a place where summertime is coming up, kids will be at the parks, at the libraries, any place like that where you all think is a good public place that, you know, you get a lot of student access, that would be great. It's up to you all.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you like to address the city council? Everybody gets three minutes, so you could go deep if you wanted to.
Hello. Hi, my name is Marichela Cantero, and I'm a union carpenter. And I just want to thank you all for allowing us to be part of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And there's many more projects to look forward to, right? This wouldn't be the only one. Sir?
First of all, I'd like to thank Hawthorne City Council for having us and allowing me to speak. I'd like to say that I've been a resident of the city of Hawthorne since 1989, raised five kids here, four of them who've went on to college. I have two that graduated from college, one that's in her second year at Cal Poly Pomona, and my other daughter will be going to her first year this summer in University of San Diego. I'd like to say that my kids played sports here for years. I worked for years, just not in the city of Hawthorne. So attending their games and sometimes missing their games due to work, traveling, one to two hours to work sometimes. I'd just like to say with these, we know that there's a couple of projects coming up. We would love to have the opportunity to work here locally. For me, obviously, I've missed a lot of time of their sports and school and stuff due to work. But for the future individuals who are living here with these projects, carpenters, union carpenters, electricians, whatever, we all deserve to work here locally. So that's something to think about when you allow these other contractors to come in that's not living in the city, that's spending money outside of its residence. So we deserve to live here, work here, and spend money here. And that's all pretty much all to say.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to say hi? Hey, we just want to say hello to you guys, too.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, city council members. My name is Steve Gantrog. I'm a graduate of the 323, the local 323 Brothers Keepers program. I'm 55 years old, and I'm a first-level apprentice, almost second level. And so it's really important, I think, you know, when we think about construction, travel, I know guys from our site, they're traveling two and a half hours each way. And it takes time away from families, but also impacts the environment. All that gas, all that, you know, CO2, all those different things are factors. You know, we'd all love to work in the communities we live in. I live in Long Beach, which is still pretty close, and I just know there's so many projects, and I've been working, I've only been working six months, but in those six months, I've never touched Long Beach or this area. So it's one of those things for us, us guys, us carpenters and other people in the trades, it'd be so beneficial, I think, for the tradesmen and also for the communities, so we could spend our money easier in our communities as well. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We're good? Okay. Thank you, guys, for... Let's give them a round of applause for all that they do. They build America. These are the ladies and gentlemen that build America, so that's an awesome thing. Last speaker, please come up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city staff, and all of our neighbors. I would like to address something that I believe is on item 15 tonight. I saw the news article pertaining to the proposed drones to be used here, and I would like to ask one thing of that program. We are already experiencing a huge surge in the illegal fireworks and the huge booms going off at all times of the night. And I wondered if the drones would be able to be used to identify where those explosions are coming from so that the residents don't have to go out in the street and potentially get in trouble with reporting a neighbor. If the drones can identify where the illegal fireworks are coming from and confiscate them and cite those people, many of us would be turning cartwheels down the street with delight. And I'm begging you to approve the program and to use it specifically for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to address the council? If not, I declare oral communications closed at 6:57. Just the oral communications is closed. The consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I have five items on the consent calendar. They're items five through nine for your consideration and approval. Item five, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item six, the city treasurer requests approval of the warrants for May 28, 2024. Item seven, resolution number 8464, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, declaring its intention to levy weed abatement assessments and set a hearing date on June 11, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. for such proposed assessments. Item eight, resolution number 8466, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, declaring its intention to levy street lighting assessments for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and setting Tuesday, June 11, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. as the time and date of a public hearing. Resolution number 8467, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, noticing intent to withdraw from Independent Cities Risk Management Authority, ICRMA, for adoption.
I move. Please vote.
I haven't seen mine show up yet.
You have to enter. Enter the meeting, please. Once you enter the meeting, it's just going to open up, okay?
Mine's not.
Press Enter the meeting on your screen. Thank you, folks.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, item 10.
Item 10, now is the time and place for a public hearing establishing fees for various departments pursuant to Government Code Section 66018. City Attorney Declaration publication filed, no written communications were received.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? If not, I declare this hearing closed, so ordered. Madam Clerk, please read resolution 8465 into the record.
Resolution number 8465, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, establishing fees for various city departments for adoption.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
The ordinances, please.
Item 11, ordinance number 2252, second reading, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending section 2.30.140, salaries of the city clerk and city treasurer of Chapter 2.30 Civil Service General Provisions and Regulations of Title II Administration's Civil Service and Personnel of the Hawthorne Municipal Code and making a finding of exemption and compliance with SEQA in connection therewith for adoption.
I move. Second. Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
We have the city manager's consent calendar. Madam Clerk, if you could please read this for us on behalf of the city manager, 12 through 16?
Items 12 through 16. Item 12, approval of the use of proposed military equipment by the Hawthorne Police Department pursuant to Assembly Bill 481. Item 13, approval of agreement between the Hawthorne Police Department and the Hawthorne School District for the provision of a school resource officer, SRO. Item 14, the transfer of $301,424.82 in unclaimed money pursuant to Government Code Section 50050. Item 15, agreement with Russ Basset, repurpose retrofit the police department's new realtime information center, RTIC. NASDAQ, provide a drone operator/observer for the drone-as-first-responder DFR program. And Lotus Telecommunications LLC, create a new local server room for the RTIC. Item 16, approval of a blanket purchase order, BPO, in the amount of $28,700 to repair the Betty Ainsworth Sports Center exterior doors. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. I have a motion to approve items 12 through 16.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Next, we have city council's discussion action items. Councilmember Manny, please proceed with item 17.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is in regard to the budget. From last time, we were talking about bringing back items that was on the budget. So I am requesting that stipends be at $3,000 and education be at $3,000. Also, I wanted to add two line items, one for the library and one for urgent care. Also, the presentation that was given by Local 250 was supposed to be on here as part of my agenda item, and I was requesting it be on 120th and Venice in front of the library. So I am asking the council to approve this project.
When you're referring to the... Let's go one by one, I suppose.
Yeah.
This is the first I hear about it, but I'm ready to discuss it.
Okay.
$3,000 stipend. What are we at right now, $2,000?
Yeah, we initially was at three, then they took it down. So I'm asking to put it back at where it was, which is $3,000.
Oh, well. To the chair. Well, yeah, it used to be $3,000 from a long time ago, and then they reduced it to $2,000 because of the... Remember during the financial crisis, like, actually, it was 2008, 2009, when they decreased that? And then, for this past eight years, has been $2,000, so...
Was it $2,500?
Well, I think it was $2,000, right?
Went down to $2,000?
But...
$2,500 or $2,000?
But I'll say we could go back to $3,000 since we have a budget that is surplus, so if it comes down that, you know, the economy goes bad, then we'll reduce it again. So I'll make the motion for the stipend right now.
A second.
So we're going to vote one by one?
One by one, the stipends.
Mr. City Attorney, is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's fine. Item 17, please, what we're talking about.
No, let's not call it item 17. It's on the specific item under discussion action, item 17, so let's just word it quick.
We're going to go stipend, then we go to the next, we discuss about education.
As long as they're on the budget items for the purpose of the brown hat.
We need a vote.
So this is for the stipend.
Stipend.
Yep. And remember, it's important to say that this is going to the community.
Yeah, it's going, yeah.
It's not that it's like going to benefit. It's just being able to distribute city money, and everybody gets a choice in distributing it around. So that's what that is.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
I think, I just want to clarify on that one, too. Calling it a stipend for the city council means that we could use it on anything. We know. This is, I'd rather it be called something else. Let's try and define the proper name that really reflects what this means. It's a community benefit money that we get... We need to call it something different, okay? Because people all stipend, and it's not.
Yeah, because stipend sounds like personal money.
It's not.
So it could be, we could say, you know, city council stip for community...
I would remove the stipend word altogether. Mr. City Attorney, could you come up with the new words?
I'll work on that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Good point.
That's the reality, man.
Yeah. Okay.
Next item?
The next one is education.
Education. Do we recall where we at at the education? It was $1,000?
Feliz? We don't have anything.
You don't have none?
It was proposed at $2,000.
Sorry. Feliz, did we have anything? Have we ever had anything previously? Okay. It was proposed at $2,000, now it's being brought up to $3,000. I feel very uncomfortable supporting something like this, especially right now, since we're asking our employees to sacrifice a lot. This is something that could benefit us, and it's, I think, right now, we just need to stand in solidarity with the employees that, you know, we're not giving them, you know, they're inching and trying to, can you please give us this, like little weedy bits of improvements in their conditions, et cetera? And for us to ask for this, I think it's not proper. I don't think I'd support any education budget right now. I could wait till another, the next time.
To the chair. So Feliz, it's my understanding that you and the city manager propose $2,000 for education, correct? Who proposed that from the beginning?
It was proposed by the city manager. I don't know where the request came from.
So since, I think, eventually, some of my colleagues think there is a need there. So since it was proposed initially by the budget committee, so I would say just keep it as the proposed $2,000 for education, not to change that to $3,000. Just to keep it the way it was proposed by the Finance Review Committee and the city manager.
No, I understand what you're saying. No, I understand what you're saying, but the city manager gets the... Because it's at the behest of somebody on the council that it came from. So it's, I really don't know who. But the reality is, I just think it's not a wise thing. I don't think it looks good. The optics are just, not even optics, I just don't think it's proper right now to do this. So I'd probably vote no on it all in its entirety.
To the chair. I think education is always important, no matter what. We're always learning. We're always being told to go to conferences where we're getting education and bringing that information back. So for me, our employees are being reimbursed as well to further education. Our police department is being told to get further education. So $2,000 in today's economy, when you talk about the cost of education, is not a lot of money. But I think, no matter what, you should always be learning, because the more we learn, we can make this place a better place and have a better understanding of the work that we need to continue to do, and it allows us to grow. When you don't take the time to learn, you don't grow. You stay stagnant. And here we are, elevating, telling the young lady from the Boys and Girls Club how important STEM is. We're talking about education, but yet you're saying that we don't need to be educated. Unless you're perfect, I can't see how being educated and continuing to learn is not a good thing. Unless you perfect, I can't see how being educated and continuing to learn is not a good thing. And when you look at the cost of two thousand dollars for an entire three hundred and sixty-five days, it doesn't make sense to say being educated on the work that we do is not important, or that it doesn't make sense. Because being educated is always makes sense. And Mayor, let me be clear, that I think you have a bachelor's degree and you have a master's degree. So, clearly, education was important to you.
No, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but the reality is, when I ran for office and what I've done, I ran for office because I felt I was prepared for the position. So, I came in with the preparation needed to be able to do that, not to learn on the job. That would have been improper and that would have been irresponsible. So, I've been gaining whatever knowledge I have through my networking, you know, on my dime, uh, and going to conferences wherever, whenever possible, on my dime or free and scholarshiped. So, it's paid for. So, I think, uh, there's plenty of conferences out there that we could take advantage of. But, um, to, the people who are actually doing the job are, is the staff. It's, uh, just, uh, city attorney, our department heads, the city manager, and all the people, the boots on the ground, those are the people who have to execute. Those are the ones that I think we should increase, whatever their education budget is. For us, we don't come here to be trained. We come here to hit the boots, uh, hit the ground running once we get elected. So, I mean, I disagree with you on that, but, I mean, if you have the votes, go ahead and, uh, uh, vote for that if you want.
To the chair. Can we table this into the rest of the council is here because, um, you're just one voice and we're missing two other?
You have support, though.
Well, uh, no, well, I was going to.
But we need three.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, but I was ask, I was gonna ask Ms. Katrina Manning to postpone this, because even if we vote, uh, it would not pass, because you need three, three votes, the majority of the council. So, I would say to postpone this education stipend, uh, until the next council meeting.
Mr. City Attorney, isn't, uh, two, isn't two people enough?
That's, uh, for consent calendar, it would be two majority vote, but as a discussion action, as an action, you need majority quorum vote.
Because you're saying two, she's saying three, and, okay.
Well, I mean, even if we keep it at two, I don't wanna get rid of it at all. You're saying we don't need it.
No, it, no, it never was on there, so we're trying to do something new. I just, that's.
I think it was on the budget as two thousand originally, last meeting.
That's just my personal, uh, thing. I just don't think it's right, but it's not a bad thing. It's not a bad thing. I just want you to think it's not a bad thing. I just don't think it's, uh, something wise to do right now. But.
We can bring it back.
Thank you. And so, um, I would ask that the other thing that I'm requesting we bring back as well, which is the, um, the box for the community, uh, library box. That the presentation that was given by Local Two-Fifty, that they were requesting, um, that we partner with them. I ask that we bring that back so that the other council people can, um, so, you know, vote on that as well.
Yeah, to, uh, to the chair, yeah. Because what I was, was thinking about, even I just text, uh, Ms. Kuanabui to talk to the carpenters, to see if, uh, if we could do these, uh, little libraries, all the, all the five parks that we have. So, it's not just to be in one.
Right. You wanna do it all over.
Uh, so, we wanna do it to all the five parks during this, you know, if we have the keep, the, the, the capacity and since you guys are gonna build it.
Yeah.
So, we just provide a small space. And so, so that's why I want Kuanas and maybe one Vons come back to org, to organize a meeting, and I would love to be on that meeting, uh, to talk about those little libraries, okay?
When we're talking about little libraries, are we talking about those, uh, where you can?
You know, where you put the book in?
Oh, absolutely.
You take, you put the book in, you take the book out. So, I wanted to make sure that it got approved, and I wasn't for sure, so I wanted to wait to the other council.
Oh, you got my support on that.
Okay, well, then, let's vote.
Well, let's talk, let's talk about, let's talk strategy.
So, that's why I, and that's why I gave it to Kuan to talk to, to, uh, my friend.
I wanna talk about it right now.
Okay, well, let's, let's talk about it.
I wanna talk about it right now.
And, no, five parks.
Look, I wanna talk about it right now, because I think that that's, actually, thank you for bringing that up, and now I understand. A big old library, you know, libraries are, you know, losing business, right? But those are beautiful. It's just a good spirit. We need to monitor. We need to make sure that they're safe, that, you know, we have people going in, taking a quick look, making sure there's nothing improper in there. I think that's good. Uh, we usually find these in, in neighborhoods, like on a, on a, uh, neighborhoods. I don't think there's anything stopping us from having, having them in neighborhoods as well. I mean, we say at the parks, that's a good spot, too, but neighborhoods as well, I think, would benefit, like the central location, the core area, I think it's, I think both at the par, I, parks would be good, but also at.
What are the parks?
But I think we should just roll, I mean, if they're able to, I mean, you guys got time? We gotta, we gotta look at that. So, yeah, I understand the scope of it.
And how many you wanna build, right?
How about we just, yeah.
Okay.
Discussions with the.
So, uh, yes, this is, uh, something that they reached out to me, um, about a month ago, wanted to do, and I wanted to bring it to council and get consensus on it. So, the first location that, um, came to mind was, um, a hundred and twentieth and Venice, right there in front of the library. So, I am proposing that we move forward on this project. Um, can we please vote?
Wait, look at that.
I was seconded.
Well, how about, yeah, I, I wanted to support this, but not with the caveat, but we just need to make sure that wherever we put this, people will be able to walk to it. If it's out of the way and if it's, you know, not accessible, then I think it's not gonna work, you know, so we gotta make sure and study that.
I'll make sure that I connect with the mayor, I'm sorry, Kwana and, um, and Vaughn, and make sure that.
So, for this, we need to come up with an amount for the budget for Felice?
Well, they're, they're doing it. They're paying for it.
Okay, then, yeah, we gotta start off with.
Provide them the location.
Okay.
Provide them the location. And that's what I'm saying, you know, we have to, you know, talk to more in detail, but, uh, one twenty and Venice is a good starting point. Uh, so, you have my support on that, but like I said, you know, the parks are ideal, because that is what the kids is gonna be doing the summer.
Right, the community.
Most of the time. So, I see all the kids at my Jimto Park, at Ramona Park, at, um, Memorial Park, Yocapita, so.
To the chair. Also, um, they had mentioned they wanted to do a rip and cutting for our first one. So.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Can I ask them, would it be easier just to kind of go one at a time? All right, okay.
Okay, let's vote.
So, we're approving the first one, right?
Yeah, we, we're gonna go ahead, okay, so we're gonna go ahead with one twenty and Venice, and then, and then we'll discuss, uh, the other parks with Vaughn and Kwana.
Let's not leave the other neighborhoods left out. We gotta have them in there. Okay. Please vote. That's good. They're gonna, that's gonna look beautiful.
What item number, Mr. Uh, City Attorney, Mr. City Attorney, what item number should I put for this?
This is still under, um, discussing and amending the proposed budget items. The, and council is voting to add an item for, um, small wooden box libraries at various locations.
It's under seventeen, discussion on item seventeen.
Should we make the accommodation for the five as of now, or we can come back?
Let's see, let's, let's then talk to Kwan and Vaughn first.
Okay. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For sure.
You have one more thing that you said that I want, I want to address that, okay? Uh, you said urgent care. Now, I understand that the urgent care, when we talk about it, uh, in, in the past, we said we were going to allocate some money from the Harper Fund, you know, from the main, the COVID money that came from the federal government. It was not from our general fund. So, just in case that if we find a provider, an allocation that is willing to open an urgent care, uh, or primary care in Hawthorne, then I believe we said we were gonna put aside from the Harper Fund about two million dollars, correct? Or one million? Okay, Felice, come and correct me, please.
About four hundred thousand dollars.
Four hundred thousand dollars. So, it's, it's, it's like, like almost was like the start, uh, a study, like a pilot project to see who of the medical provider who wants to come to Hawthorne and build, because, like I said, I don't want us to put no dollar amount into our budget, especially, you know, for the general fund, because urgent care or primary care is gonna cost millions and millions of dollars to build. And I don't want to give any impression out there from the, uh, from the medical providers or from the healthcare system that we're gonna give them money to build uh, urgent care, because we don't have the money to build the urgent care.
So, then what's the purpose of this item?
No, so that's what I'm trying to understand.
So, the other thing that I was trying to do was, if we had money from another, um, Harper, uh, from the art money to move over.
Arpa?
Yeah, to move over. And I know we had a discussion about the possibility of taking money from other places, um, to put here. So, that's what I wanted to do, to use some more money as an incentive, not to build. I know that you, I know the cost of building. So, I'm not saying that, but it is an incentive for someone to come, and we support them with, you know, more money than four hundred thousand. But no, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay, but the four hundred thousand as an incentive? These guys are moneymakers. These guys are, this, these guys are not, these guys are not like nonprofits. These are moneymaking, uh, organizations, these, uh, these, they're businesses. So, why are we gonna give something of that amount to them?
I interject here, it's, I'm, I'm getting concerned about how far we're straying away from the description of the agenda, agenda item, which is to go back to budgeted line items and discuss whether you wanna increase that amount or not. Urgent care, uh, establishing however you wanna promote urgent care, it has to be a separately agendized item, has to be fully discussed, it has to be analyzed by staff and things of that nature. So, we can't just stick it under this, uh, description of discussing and amend the various budgeted items from the budget workshop, which was last meeting.
But not only that, that's a gift of public funds to a profit-making, uh, organization. It's a gift of public funds.
Well, I mean, e- even the discussion of this, it's not on, it's not described appropriately on the agenda, so you have a, I have a concern about the Brown Act. So, I, I recommend, strongly recommend that items like this, that you let staff know and have it agendized as a separate item to be discussed as an urgent care.
I did do that, um, Robert, but this is how it ended. So, I, I did send an email specifically.
I, I, I saw your email, and I, I don't wanna get into details of that, because we're discussing privileged communication between attorney and, and staff and yourself. Um, however, some of those items that you listed on the emails has to be analyzed and, and thoroughly vetted out, because some requires approval. Uh, so, there's legalities involved with some of these issues that you've mentioned. So, let me just put it that way, without going into details, okay?
So, to, let's, let's postpone this conversation for another day.
Actually, uh, there's still time?
Well, I, I don't think we can discuss urgent care at this point, 'cause it's not on the agenda. It's, what's on the agenda under number seventeen is discuss and amend various line items. That was in the budget workshop from last week, I mean, last meeting, I'm sorry.
Well, in anticipation for that discussion, can we ask the city attorney to do any research?
Well, what we can do is this, during, I, I, why don't we go back, when we get to the elected official reports, you could give directive unto staff to analyze a particular topic, it may be urgent care or maybe other items.
Okay.
Through, through the chair?
Sure.
Yeah, this, this conversation should be for another time, because, uh, as part of the, uh, Ad-Hoc Committee for Economic Development, there is conversation already in progress about talking to some medical providers to, to potentially to come to Hawthorne and build a primary care facility. So, it is in, it is already being studied, it's been, it's been analyzed by our consultants. So, and, and, and he, and he and she gave us an update about, uh, a week and a half ago, that there is conversation already going, uh, with some potential provider. So, so it is part of the Ad-Hoc Committee, and eventually is gonna come to the council for us to discuss, and what's the next step?
Um, and, uh, no, points, point well taken. Um, I still, even though I have my initial comments on this thing, because, you know, I thought we were gonna be able to discuss it, I think, uh, council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Manning has a right to uh, id, agendize this for, uh, either, for, uh, its own separate discussion item. We still have time. Um, and then we could see if some, if that's something we can do, if it's allowable, if it's beneficial, et cetera, and all the other things. Okay, but, but if you could just already anticipate, that it'd probably most likely go on.
Why don't we, during the elected official reports, with council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Manning, you can give us specific direction as to what you want the staff to look into on this issue, okay?
Good. I think that's proper. Next item, please?
Oh, that's me. Uh, so, this item is that I am requesting, uh, the city attorney's department give us a monthly update of the work that you're doing. Um, this was a report that, uh, council member David Patterson requested, so I am joining with him to request this from your department.
I'll provide a legal confidential on that.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
A comment on that? I just, I need to comment, because, uh, I just didn't feel that when, uh, council member David Patterson did that, it was just for the benefit of the city. And the reason being is that we're already, uh, we're already criticizing the different departments here for, you know, not getting certain, sometimes certain things done. And by asking them to give a formal report every month, I think that's adding more to their plate. So, what are we doing? I think that's a concept. I don't think that, that, uh, that request by council member David Patterson was, uh, to improve things. I think it was, uh, can we say, has anybody heard the word ma, uh, com, uh, the, the concept of, you know, managing people out, tiring them out? I mean, what's going on here? I mean, adding things to people's plate. It's just gonna overburden, and we're complaining that we don't get things done and all this stuff. What's gonna happen? I just don't think that this is something we need to do. Uh, you know, it's just, don't we already get reports? Do you give us legal confidential every single time?
Yes, he does.
Are people free to go into your office and ask you what you're doing?
Uh, my door's open for elected officials anytime.
Isn't, don't we already know what the functions of your department are?
We do, and, and I just, you know, without blurring this point, I just wanna say that the reason why I can't do a report, monthly report, like other departments, is that most of the, um, the cases that we handle are confidential. So, when we discuss it, it has to be either by confidential memo or closed session on some of the cases that I know that the council members are concerned about. So, we do that in closed session to give status, and, and you recall that we did that on one of the cases that, uh, was very important to the city. It's, right now, I don't have any assistance, because the council voted by resolution to reject, to keep my assistant city attorney until a replacement is found. I think we'll be, we're very close to hiring a new assistant city attorney to give me some assistance here, but for now, it's been rather difficult.
Okay.
Um, but I have no problem providing a status report for all the cases that we have, all the, all the, all the civil cases we have. But monthly report on civil cases that drags out is really not, I, I really can't make much changes for most of these cases on a monthly basis.
I just don't wanna you to think that I was, it was, it was a critique of one of my colleagues, but it was not on you.
But I have nothing to do with David Patterson.
Oh, well, it was just not, I didn't think it was sincere.
With David Patterson has nothing to do with, I wanted a overall, like, okay, we, we've won ten cases, we lost twelve cases. This is that, this is like a overview of what your department is, is doing.
I'd be more than happy to do that, but just monthly, we're not gonna have that kind of changing status. Yes, so I'll do that once.
So, what about quarterly?
That's fine.
Would that work?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
That's actually good information, if it's done at a good time.
I mean, it's, it's good information to know overall what, what we're doing, you know?
And you have a perfect right to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was, that was good. That's actually good, if we could, if it's a reasonable right. The next item is a review of city policies ordinances that will. The next item is a review of city policies ordinances that will assist small businesses. Go ahead. That's you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, actually, I want us to review some of the orders and, and resolution that was done, uh, maybe about two decades ago, on specifically some issues like banners and signs, uh, because I've been getting a lot of emails from business that, uh, um, there has been a lot of controversy about banners being put in their business. So I want us to review the policy that we have in, on the books. So, uh, so if, uh, maybe Greg from the planning, the planning, uh, can look at those orders and, and, and talk to you, Robert, and see, uh, what can, to bring it to us that we can amend some of those.
I think that's a good request, uh, to see what's actually on the books and see why it was done. Hopefully, there's some justifications there.
Yeah.
Um, because sometimes, some of the stuff doesn't seem reasonable, but then when you go and take a visit to the locations, you kind of see why it was probably most likely put into place. Uh, we're doing, we're, we're kind of getting information and just taking the people who received the violations' word for it. And that's fine, they have a right to tell us, but we also, in order to be able to, uh, you know, make a good decision, we have to kind of see exactly what was the case.
Yeah, because it's, because it's been, has some several, several, you know, communications, so.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. We have elected officials, uh, we're, is everybody in agreement on that one? We don't have to vote on that one?
We're good.
We have the, all right. We can continue with the meeting, there's no, I know it's, there, it said that we have to have a quorum, if somebody leaves to go to the bathroom or something, or whatever, but, uh, since we don't have any decisions in front of us at the table, uh, we can continue with the elected officials' reports, starting with the city treasurer. Um, is that, is that accurate?
That's fine, yes.
Go ahead.
All right, good evening, thank you everyone for coming out. Um, let's see, first up, the GIOA has, uh, did not certify our investment policy, so I am working on revising that under, uh, review of them. Um, and I will be getting that to Felice real soon. Um, I attended Jim Park opening day, that was really great, uh, the American Legion Hawthorne Veterans Affairs, um, annual Memorial Day cer- uh, ceremony was really beautiful. Um, the guest speaker told her amazing story, and it was a really, really heartbreaking but warm story. Um, I've also been more than happy donating popsicles for Eucalyptus Elementary, they've been having a weekly popsicle fundraising, and I am looking forward to working with Eucalyptus ES on some upcoming projects. So thank you for, everyone for coming out, have a good night.
Thank you. Um, Ms. City Clerk?
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, um, and thanks all the people who stayed to the end. Um, I had the wonderful privilege of attending a conference, an international municipality, um, clerk, uh, the, the International Conference of Municipal Clerks. Uh, it was in Calgary, Canada, and it was, uh, you know, four days of people from all over the world interacting and talking about all the things that we do at the clerk's office. Um, you know, the different, uh, positions all over the world, they hold different names, some people are called recorders, town recorders and whatnot, uh, but it was a clerk association, it was fantastic. Uh, Calgary's absolutely beautiful, and they really did tune into, uh, the Native American culture there. Uh, we had, uh, the elder from one of the Blackfoot tribes come out and give, uh, a big presentation, they did a dance, and they wore their full gear. And the theme this year was actually cowboys, so we did mechanical bull riding, and we took pictures on the mechanical bull, and we had a really great time. So I want to thank the city for that, because, uh, what a privilege it is to attend that, to learn more about what other people are doing all over the world, as it pertains to clerks, uh, or recorders, if you will, and, uh, just thank the city for that. Uh, other than that, I just want to remind everyone that, uh, if you would like to register to vote, you can come into my office, I do have voter, voter registration cards there, or you can go online to register to vote, uh, and, you know, if you all need anything else, please feel free to stop by my office or give us a call. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilmember Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for being here and be at home watching us. Um, first, I want to say that, you know, Memorial Day was yesterday, so, uh, thank you to all of those who participate on the event, uh, yesterday at Memorial Park. Um, it's, uh, an event that every year, we know, we kind of remember our heroes that sacrificed their lives, uh, for us to have the freedom that we have in this country. So thank you for that, first of all. I want to say, say thank you to all the people that show up here tonight, uh, especially, you know, the Boys and Girls Clubs, because, uh, um, after-school program is one of the things that is not enough. We know, know, the, some of the schools have after-school, but it's always a lack of funding, lack of money. So every time that, uh, an organization such as, you know, Boy Scout and Girls Clubs comes to provide some after-school program, we have to embrace those, because they will give the kids a place to go, uh, not just to be home or be on the street or in the park somewhere doing this, nothing. At least they could be able to learn stamp and some other technology stuff. Um, I want to, again, it was, uh, good to see, uh, Pat Donaldson here tonight, uh, thank you, because, you know, she's been part of this community for more than twenty-five years. Um, I want to, I want to see if the housing department, Miss Kimberly Mack, can look into those vouchers for youth, okay? Uh, because I attend, uh, last week, uh, South Bay Coalition, uh, homeless, uh, coalition that was a, was about, maybe about a hundred people there, and they were talking about, you know, the problems about the youth that's coming out of the foster care, right? Because from the eighteen to twenty-four, because when they turn eighteen, they no longer belongs to the foster care, so they have to be on their own. So, so that is why we have some, uh, youth homeless, uh, individual on the street, and like he said, you know, Hotone, we have about ten, ten homeless. And believe it or not, at the, uh, Hotone High and losing, and, um, and the, um, Londell High, they have now a homeless liaison for those students over there. So maybe we can see if we can apply for some of those vouchers, I appreciate that. Uh, I want to thank the carpenters for coming, uh, you know, because I did visit your facility in Carson, beautiful facility, I hope you could have one in Hotone for training. Uh, but definitely, I love the idea, uh, about, uh, the little libraries, because, you know, books, uh, when I was a little kid, my mom would wake up at, it was five o'clock in the morning to read books regardless, even during the summer, didn't care. Five o'clock, get up and read. So I know that's the way, you know, we become successful in life. So thank you for bringing the project to us, and we'll embrace that. And also, I'm going to make sure that, uh, some of this work, this project that we're coming to Hotone, that we're going to have you guys doing some carpentry work on it, okay? So that's my promise to you. Uh, I want also to, just to tell you that, uh, you know, I attend a lot of, a lot of meetings, the Sanitation Street Board Meeting, the Clean Power Alliance, uh, Board of, Board of Directors and Executive Committee Meeting, the South Bay COC, the Studying Committee, the Board, the Board of Directors Meeting, the RCC nine-one-one system, uh, the South Bay Homeless Star Force I just mentioned, and let me tell you, the, one of the things that I attend was the Medal of Valor, okay? With our chief and all the Hotone Police Department, and we had eleven officers that received Distinguished Server Award and Life Saving Award. Eleven officers, we were the biggest number in this booklet, okay? Because it's a, so. So. I have to say that I could not have been so much proud of our police department, that year after year kept demonstrate how police is all about, saving lives, okay? And let me tell you a story, even, even, this was after the Medal of Valor. Uh, I was at the gym, and I saw this gentleman from the Continental Gourmet, where, where I go buy my steaks, you know, for Friday night dinners, and I said, oh, man, I haven't seen you for a while. He said, oh, I have a stroke. I had a stroke right at the, at the shop, at the Continental Gourmet in One Turi and Prairie, and he said, thanks God for two police officers was there. They dragged me, they put me down, put me some stamp, and he said, I'm alive because of those officers. And that was after this Medal of Valor. And if I say, what's the name of those, I say, I don't remember, because I was, I was gone. And he said, the doctor said if it was not the, the fast acting of those two police officers, I would not been here right now. So again, I have to say, my hat goes off to the chief, to all the captain, to all the officers that we have, about eighty-eight of them, right? So outstanding, and that is what we all about, serving the community and saving lives. So that was one of the most beautiful things that I attend, so thank you, thank you, thank you for inviting me to go there. Uh, the other thing that was beautiful, because a year ago, on, on May fifteen, we opened the, uh, uh, bridge homes, you know, the community housing for transition homes, that we can house some, uh, unhousing individual, and we give them, you know, wraparound service, mental health, uh, job training, and then we put them back into society. And we, believe it or not, we have, from that shelter, from our tiny homes, we have permanent house fifty-nine individuals so far, okay? So, so I could not be much proud of, of, of that. Uh, and I have to say, you know, some other stuff, like, you know, like the community support, our police departments, I want to thank again, all of those, like, uh, Mr. Mo said about the Hotone K-9 dinner that we have there, uh, we sold about a hundred twenty dinners that night, so we're still raising money for the K-9 Police Department, and those K-9 dogs were so beautiful, uh, so I, I know a lot of people hide them. The other thing that I, I stopped by was the South Bay Whip, uh, Job Fair, was tremendous, it was like thousands of people at the Memorial Center, uh, and a lot of, a lot of jobs there. So it was a very good attending, right here in our backyard. Um, and this morning, it was another project, a groundbreaking, uh, to improve our streets, and I have, my hat have to go off with the Agbar, the Public Works Department, to continue to bring us grants from Major R. and, uh, and from the SB one funding, uh, to improve our roads. So if you see, if you go drive by Imperial Highway, you see how we begin paving all the Imperial Highway, from always from Melsegund all the way up to, uh, Yukon, uh, and, and it's starting looking beautiful, okay? So another project of the thirty-two project that we have right now, capital improvement in our street. So again, the staff is working every day, and even sometime at late night, to roll these grants. So thank you for all the work they've been doing. So, and that's the last thing I have to say, is, Juneteenth is coming up, Saturday, June twenty-second, put on your calendar, uh, from eleven to four, and we're going to have live music, food trucks, uh, arts and craft, and la- dancing, so come enjoy at Memorial Park. Um, the other thing that I want to remind the landlords, that the LA County, right now, have an application for rent relief money, okay? This, the landlord have to apply. For those tenants that are in, behind their rents, the, they have until June fourth to apply, uh, to LA County, rentrelief.com, LA County, rentrelief.com, if your tenants are not paying you rent, okay? So again, thank you for coming, and, uh, I hope the fireworks, uh, nonprofit raised a lot of money this year, so you're going to get seven, so good luck, and you guys have a good one, and good night, and God bless.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Manning, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you for all coming tonight, appreciate it, really enjoyed the presentation given by the Boys and Girls Club, I'm excited about that partnership, um, the work that's going to be done is going to be amazing, uh, the tech part of it, I'm really excited about. I'm also excited about our, our, our little library that's coming up, can't wait to, to do that. Um, also, um, our library has been closed for quite some time, so because of the books that you'll have there, it'll be the beginning of what's going to be eventually great. Also, um, safe place for youth, thank you so much for coming and letting us know about those vouchers, I think it's really important. Um, we also have another organization, um, in our city that works with, uh, youth from eighteen to twenty-four. Um, so this is great to be able to provide those vouchers. Um, I've run into young folk that are in college, but they're homeless, and so this is an opportunity for us to provide them a, a chance to have somewhere to sleep at night, so thank you so much for coming. And also, Luciana, um, hope I pronounced his name right.
Luciano.
Um, for his K-9, I think it's going to be really exciting, uh, for those kids to be honored for the work that they're doing, uh, for the veterans and, and learning and teaching those dogs, that's going to be amazing. So I look forward to seeing them here and being able to honor them and the work that they've put in, because our young folks need support, we need to let them know that the work that they do is really important, so that they can continue to help others and be leaders in our community. So thank you for that. And then also, I want to direct the city attorney slash Mr. Von Norris slash chief, um, in regards to their urgent care, um, if you could do research on that and then come back to me as it regards to, and I guess add it to the agenda, uh, next time as a single item. And then the library as a single item, too.
It's called Leader Library by the carpenters.
No, not that one, I'm talking about the big one.
The big one?
The big one, the one that's been closed for thirty-five years.
Uh-huh. And that's been twenty-five years. For clarification, uh, as to the library, the big library, what is it that you want us to look into, or just bring it back as a discussion action?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's talk about it in general.
We want to talk about it in general, and I have some updates on that as well, um, that we've been talking to the county. And I had an opportunity to celebrate, um, Veterans Day as well, my husband is a, a veteran, um, he was in the Army, and I also wanted to say that the American Legion, they did an amazing job, and the Veterans Commission, and I want to give a shout out to, uh, Fay Johnson, um, I, she showed me the pictures of the banners, and it is amazing, if you are a veteran, please call her and get your information in. You don't want to miss out on being on the banners, because they are wonderful, they are lovely, and, uh, I'm so proud of our city in the way we're going to honor our veterans. It's going to be beautiful. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Through the chair.
Let's get it done.
No, I just want to, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, uh, uh, our chief is acting as the city manager today, because, because, uh, Mr. Von Norris, you know, is kind of having, uh, some health issues, uh, but I keep in touch with Von, so, uh, I hope he feels better. But thank you, chief, for sitting here for, for Von, and this morning, you know, you went to that Grand Open, too, and you spoke eloquently in very delicate words and fantastic words about our city, so thank you again for all your leadership and your courage, okay? And I told, I told you to take the fifth, right?
Okay. All right, um, yeah, he's doing a great job, uh, man a few words, right? Man a few words, but he gets the job done, right? Man a few words, right?
He got rid of his beard, mustache.
Why does everybody go after us? All right. Uh, I want to thank the carpenters, local three-two-three, the regional council of carpenters for being here today. Um, it's really cool that you guys are here representing, and this is awesome that you guys are going to be doing this, like, uh, little mini libraries. I've seen them in other cities, and it just, you know, we're at that level, folks, we need to return to those level where people can, you see so many people walking their dogs, you know, you so, see so many people, kids playing out in the streets. You know, you see so many people, kids playing out in the streets again. It was a long time, there was a period where you weren't able to do that. There's so many things like that happen in the city of Hawthorne. A lot of our events are starting to come back. And, you know, we're rebuilding our city. So I think this is a perfect manifestation of where we are, to have these little mini libraries that just say, hey, you know, we're on par with the best cities. We are the best city in the South Bay. Proud to be here, proud to have been born here, and I'll continue to live here till I die, like they say, right? So thank you, guys, for being able to be part of this whole renaissance that we have going on. I want to thank the volunteers. They were recognized recently. And I also want to join in the saluting them, congratulating them. They're the backbone of our city, and was not able to be there because I had a family emergency. But I send my regards to them. The K-9 Dinner, thank you, sir, for organizing that with your crew and all the volunteers and everybody who organized as well. Always well put together. The police department and our K-9 officers are very appreciative of what's been done when it comes to that. So it is great to see everybody out there that's always supporting these functions as well. The Memorial Day event was really nice. So Ronnie, the pastor, I think, who else was there? You were there, Councilmember Montero? The Haggardys were there, you know, everybody was there. Yeah. You know, it's just good to see people out there. The city treasurer was there. So, and I know the council members who weren't there sent their regards. Oh, and the mayor Protem was there as well with her husband. So it's always somber to know that, you know, that people have passed and that people have passed in the battle, but people are passing away. And it's good to recognize and make sure that we honor them. The price of freedom is not free. You know, it takes effort, protection, patriotism. I think we need to bring that back even more and more and more. But these events like Memorial Day recognition services are very important to remind people of what's happened and that there's actual lives and names to those people, okay? Names and faces, okay? So thank you to the American Legion, the Veterans of Foreign Awards, and the Sons of American Legions, and the auxiliary, the female auxiliaries for both of those groups. Congratulations to the Medal of Valor recipients for all the awards. Hawthorne always has the biggest number of awardees in the program, always. It never fails. I mean, you've noticed that, right, Chief? Always the largest number, but, you know, it's because, you know, we know what we're doing, and we, you know, we take care of business, and all these other departments look up to us for what we do. So we have a well put together group that we have. Oh, no, 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 none of that, none of that. No more. That's it. Okay, yeah, he looks great today. All right, so I agree with you. I agree with you. He looks great.
But, Mr. Mayor, I have to mention this, because it was very important, because actually, at that Medal of Valor honor, actually, they singled out Hawthorne to be on the forefront of innovation and medical field. They recognized Dr. Akagawa about, because they've been using our expertise from Hawthorne to the other cities and helping them getting all the training they need. So they actually singled out Hawthorne, not just for the valor, you know, but also. So like I said, we are doing the right thing, okay?
Okay, that's cool. I was about to say that, but it's okay. You mentioned it before me. Thank you. All right. So thank you. Thank you for the police department, all you guys do. Okay, we're finished? Okay, thank you. All right. So when it comes to the education, I mean, we brought something up. I do, you know, I just want to make sure that we have the buy-in from our employee groups, that if the city's going to, the elected officials up here are going to be able to have some type of educations stipend, that we have their buy-in. That's what I need to make sure that we have. And I'm going to talk to them and see how they feel about that. And I believe we're going to probably have a positive support for that from the city employee groups, right? So I'll have a talk, and we'll come back with something that's reasonable, right? The pool registration is opening up now, so make sure that if you're ready to sign up for the pool for services and for all the different events at the pool, that it's open for registration. So sign up, pay your fees, and go out there and enjoy the swimming pool, okay? I'm working out, so I can go out there, too, and go, yeah, do my thing, right? Kwanah, can you please come up? I don't know if you guys know this, and this hasn't been talked about yet, but we, how many times have you seen other cities have concerts in the park, concerts in the park, right? We've been left out for like, we never have had anything of the sort. So we have concerts in the park, something, something that I kind of brought up. But of course, staff always takes the lead and makes things happen. So I want Kwanah Boy to tell us what's going to happen this year, along with the movies in the park. Can you describe and just, let's promote this?
Okay, so what we're going to do, the dates would be July 12th, 19th, and 26th. We're going to have concerts in the park from 6 to 8, and then we're going to have movies in the park right after on each of those dates.
Oh, come on, man. Give me more, man. Come on. I wouldn't go to that. Tell us more. The bands, what's the music? What's going to happen? Are people going to be able to dance? What's going on?
Yeah, so you'll be able to dance, obviously, at the concerts. And honestly, right off the top of my head, I don't remember the first two, but I know the last one on the 26th would be the Selena band.
But who wants to hear some Selena on the third one, right? That's good, right?
Oh, so you're doing it without me?
Oh, no, 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 it's not a jazz festival, but this is just a small thing.
We want to see you dancing.
Yeah, because we don't want you to worry about anything. We want you to enjoy it, you know. I know you're behind the scenes always, so we want to make sure you're out there dancing.
It's going to be a really nice family event, and we're going to have food trucks there. And there may be a few vendors out there as well, so if you guys are interested, come out. It should be fun.
When will a flyer be available?
Actually, the information is on our Community Services brochure for summer. So if you look online, you'll see the full lineup of all the bands, as well as all the movies that will be presented.
And we'll get it on social media pretty soon, just to start promoting that way. The first one's going to be a rock band, I believe, and the next one's going to be like a funk band.
There you go.
All right.
And what about the classics?
Okay, thank you. So that's what we have going on. What else? Well, that's it. Thank you. All right, guys, so I want to thank all my council colleagues who are here for a good, swift, efficient meeting. We were able to get things done. I don't know. I was surprised that we were able to finish this, but I don't know. Are you guys surprised? Inside joke. Sorry about that, guys. Sorry about that. Inside joke, guys. Thank you to all the residents who have come up and expressed themselves at the podium. We hope that we're able to resolve the matters that you've brought before us in a reasonable manner. And always, anybody who's out there who needs to talk to us and relay something to us, please come before us during oral communications. Any communications that we receive from the residents, we're going to be reading them. If they're like digital, we need to read them, to put them into record, okay? We can't just have somebody just say something and expect it to be read, okay? We need to make sure that people's voices are heard. You have the Juneteenth celebration that you already mentioned, right? So the Juneteenth celebration, the Police and Fire Recognition Lunch by the Kwanah's Club, Tuesday, June 4th. All right, so I guess that ends the meeting. Thank you all for being here, and this meeting is adjourned at 8 o'clock.